At six o'clock, we'll call them getting to order. I'm here for silent prayer, please. Stand for the pledge of allegiance. Roll call, please.
Here.
Here.
Thank you.
Here.
Caves. Mayor Milovitz.
Here. Report of clerk for compliance with open meeting laws.
The agenda was sent to the media as well as posted in three public places.
And I'll be looking for approval, agenda, or other matters authorized by law.
Second.
Second, all favor?
Aye.
Business forum. And we have citizen recognition. And it is, looks like an excellent crowd this evening for some police officer commendations. And if the chief would please come forward.
Mayor, members of council, thank you for this opportunity to address you this evening. I have two incidents that occurred that I'm going to be issuing commendations to officers from the City of Shawano Police Department for events. So first of all, I'd like Officer, excuse me, Sergeant Kamba, Chel Kamba, and Officer Joshua Shawna Kasek, step forward, please. On Monday, May 21st, 2021, at approximately 4:05 PM, Sergeant Kam and Officer Shawna Kasek responded to 1134 East Elizabeth Street in the City of Shawano for an ambulance assist. Upon arriving, Sergeant Kam was informed the victim did not have a pulse. Officer Kam informed EMS the victim's status and to the residence and began cardiopulmonary resuscitation or CPR. Sergeant Kamber, Kamba, and Officer Shawna Kasek worked together to provide CPR and as a result, normal heart rhythm was achieved. The patient was transported to the hospital by EMS. Sergeant Kamba and Officer Shawna Kasek entered a critical incident, responded in accordance to the highest expectations of the Shawano Police Department. Sergeant Kam and Officer Shawna Kasek exemplify the core values of the Shawano Police Department and its mission to protect and serve. Sergeant Kamba and Officer Shawna Kasek are commended for their actions to the service to this community. Josh, you might as well stay up here. Officer Peacock, step forward, please. The second incident exemplifies duty to service and community. Oftentimes in country, especially in the times that we're in now, off-duty conduct is often shown in the media as officers doing something wrong or something, something negative. In this particular case, off-duty conduct is looking short of heroic. On Thursday, June 3rd, approximately 2:00 PM, Officer Shawna Kasek and Officer Peacock were off-duty at the Golden Sands Golf Club when they observed a male subject collapse on a golf course green. Upon observing the male subject collapse, Shawna Kasek and Peacock went to his aid. They informed the patient had suffered from seizures in the past and was showing symptoms of a seizure now. The subject was placed in the recovery position as EMS was summoned. Officers continued to monitor and realized the subject had no pulse. Shawna Kasek and Peacock worked together to provide cardiopulmonary resuscitation or CPR. Officers were able to establish a pulse on the patient and by the time EMS arrived, the patient was breathing and conscious. Officer Shawna Kasek and Peacock encountered a critical incident and responded in accordance to the highest expectations of Shawano Police Department, their lifesaving skills for the difference between life and death for the patient. This event shows even while off-duty, officers' sense of duty and service drive them to go to trouble. Officer Shawna Kasek and Peacock exemplify the core values of Shawano Police Department and its mission to protect and serve. Officer Shawna Kasek and Peacock amended for their actions, service to this community. Thank you.
Thank you, officers, for outstanding work. It's so, so good to be able to celebrate that, our community. So with that, we'll move on to staff reports and... Chief, are you first? Actually, it looks like it's a building report. Okay. Okay, got it. Okay. Thanks for coming, everyone. So, really don't have any staff report?
They'll do their, their monthlies, but those aren't, that's not what those are.
Okay, got it. Put it this way, whoever would like to go first. I figured you had the biggest audience here, chief, so originally.
So, staff report. The SRO monthly reports are attached for your preview. There was a, an error on my part, the monthly report for the police department wasn't included, but I'll make sure to send those to upon request if you'd like. As far as events for the police department last month, the biggest, obviously, was sundrop days, which we had a presence at. Happy to report no incidents, no law enforcement incidents to report, a couple of medical issues related to, mostly related to deheat. So, a successful event in that, in those terms.
Hey, Mayor Council, pardon my tardiness, but Parks and Rec has been busy. This time of year is always great for us because it's all those things that we've been planning for, whether it's projects or programs or redesigns. And now this time of the year is actually when we get to see them implemented and used by the community. And so far, it's been a great summer. It's been really busy for all of our staff because we've had a lot of activity, which is exactly what you want, right? We want activity in the parks, we want activities in the program. So, one of the things, the highlight that I'm really excited about, you know, Franklin Park has obviously now been completed for a few years, but now that we're back into kind of more of a, more normal summer, I guess, is the amount of community use it's had. You know, yes, we had our first Thursdays at Franklin and that went over really well, but outside of us, there was six or seven other very large community events that have already taken place. The high school jazz has used it, St. James has used it, the church group is using it, county health has used it for some events. So, you know, those are the things that we get excited about because those are events taking place in our facilities that we're not having to spend a ton of time and energy on programming, right? I mean, there's some time and energy, you know, especially the first time anyone does one, there's a lot of questions, but that's truly what we want in these community parks. Because ultimately, you know, you've heard Eddie and Leslie talk about, you know, the magic number of a few hundred days of activity or 300 or whatever it is, that's how we get to points like that out of these public spaces by having everyone doing a few. And so, that's been great to see. The beach, as you can imagine, is just crazy busy, as is the splash pad with 97 degrees weather. And so again, that's what we like to see. So, I don't have any other things specific, but I'd be happy to answer any questions if there are any. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor, also. It is the season for construction. If anybody's been driving around Shawano, they have seen many orange barrel and apron gates, type threes, got a lot of construction going on. Got crews over on Walker Shawn, between Big Avenue and Solomon Lane, Hill Crest. We also have construction crews on South 100, 200 blocks, so it's Molly Street. Also have Division Street milled and I saw them milling and pulling concrete out on... Lot of construction going on out there and trying to be a little bit better. The other thing, I guess, for our crews, they're pretty busy, a lot of wind damage, I guess I would say, a lot of tree limbs and larger branches, trees down, so it's been pretty busy cleaning up city, but burned down. I don't really have anything else, questions?
Have we been successful on finding some summer help? I know you were looking for some people. I know that there was temp services for a little bit.
Actually, one of people that had kind of suggested came over by us and we hired him the same day. Worked at the cemetery, I think, last year, going and trimming for them. Yeah, he's going to be starting on. Very happy to say that we filled up right now. Thank you.
Apologize, everyone. Obviously, we're having some technical difficulties.
I'm patient, I'll be there, I can wait.
We need, yeah, we're trying to get Brandon on here for an item coming up here. I think we may have backed into fixing it, maybe. Say anything else and leave it like that and not touch it.
Sorry about that.
Oh, it's...
Well, are we okay to move forward then?
Yeah.
All right, we'll carry on. Sound off, is there any public input? Anything that you'd like to talk about? Please head over to the podium, state your name and your address.
My first name is Shirley. I live at... ORB ordinance. I have complaints about that. First and foremost, my question to the council member, I would like to know why the decision was made without adding this as a referent ballot. Residents had an opportunity to make a decision. Number two, as a city taxpayer, I am not living... These vehicles are designed specifically to be on trails outside of the community. Number two, gentlemen just mentioned, the ongoing road construction in our community, our residents are parking other streets than their own. These vehicles are hard to see as it is and they do not have to have directional signals on them. And so, I feel that with the volume of traffic in what we would consider a city as an urban setting, that they are definitely not of a good, this is not a good setting for them. Also, I have followed these ORB people. I have photos on my phone. They are not going to the trails. What they are doing at this time is they are using their ORBs as an alternative form of transportation within the city limits. I have followed an older couple from a restaurant to their home. I have followed young people, past my home, Bartlett Street is a very busy thoroughfare, suffering quite a few of these, and they're going all over the place. According to the regulations, the DNR, they are not, they do have to be, you have to send a certificate in every year to get the certificate renewed, I think it might be every two years. The council adopted the DNR's plans for the ORB usage. However, what you did not take a look at is none of these vehicles by law are required to carry any kind of collision insurance, no liability. So, I take issue with a 13-year-old that's just received a permit to drive one of these off-road vehicles that are, a lot of them are full of four people. They will not be able to manage this vehicle within urban setting and higher volume of traffic if they had to take an invasive measure. They're putting also your motor risks, your city residents, at risk, not only by accident, but also financially, because if you get into trouble with one of these insurance companies. I have been in touch with the Motorist Division, they have now sent me over to... Again, as a taxpayer, I chose Shawano. I pay city taxes, not pay taxes and ORBs along. I have blocked my div, if you would, or the better part of it, L U, that on my... Nobody likes that. There have been complaints to the, I have made, help, young people were on small... One time, a young man went by, was popping weed. This is what we are encountering all across the city, RV road. Does not be good, if you would, because they're also not... So, I've got pictures of high school, I have pictures of schools picking cars, I'm that, or you have another vehicle that's competing with school buses and traffic. So, I really would like the board to re... Given the fact that there is insurance, needs to be added by these. I called and my source information for that was, that is my pageant, informed me that companies are not happy with closing, the only... ORB accidents are on the rise, even if urban setting for the... So, you're dealing higher volume of traffic, higher volume of tur... Have city streets, air, vehicles parking not in homes or whatever, so there's a... I have older neighbors on that I consider that they're not watching for these, so that if they're backing out, that. I know that also through other sources, I don't do that Facebook, but long-term people have it, at least, nobody is... So, I give a park, I... Park is being... But I'm not, I... I don't believe it... Uh, the. And, um. Oh, I have a hot dog. They're the ones that are.
Ma'am, ma'am, thank you. I, we very much appreciate your comments and I'm sure that they understand, but we do have a three minute limit.
Thank you for your time. We'll take that on. Okay. Is there anything, uh, on internet that? All right, seeing none, we'll move on to correspondence. We have correspondence. Uh, committee and commission report. How do you have this all working? Because if we do, we'll move on to something really fun to talk about, and that's going to be the update on our downtown plaza redevelopment.
Brandon, first and foremost, can you hear us?
Yes, I can hear you. Can you hear me?
Yeah. Good. Thank you for being patient and texting back and forth and figuring this out with us. Um. So, um, we've got you up to your visible to everybody like you were last time. So anything you want to present, I think you should be able to do that as far as sharing screen or whatever, like we talked about.
Um, sure.
So do you want to dive in or do you want me to kind of lay the, the lay of the land for how we want to touch, talk about this tonight?
Uh, if you, I mean, I can share my screen right now and then maybe that'll help you, but I, I was planning on talking through, um, kind of where we're at here. Can you guys all see an image of the plaza?
Yes.
Okay. Um. So I, I guess I'd be happy to just take it off Eddie, if that's okay.
Yep, that works.
Okay. Um, so, you know, last month we talked and you may remember Blake Tyson from Park Architecture was there as well, and he walked us through the model of the plaza space. Uh, Blake is on vacation with his family this week and so he's unable to attend. And so what I have for us here is some static images of essentially the same concept that you saw before. Um, we can go into as much detail as you'd like, but I thought I'd just give a quick overview of kind of like a remember what this looked like, kind of, kind of a vision here. Um, what you're looking at here is, is facing south. So on the right, you have Franklin Park and Washington Street. Uh, if you can see my cursor, that's over here. Um, and we have kind of like the, the West Plaza block, um, which incorporates the existing bathroom building. It was built a few years ago. Um, we're adding some parking along Franklin Park and Washington Street. Uh, we're talking about doing a tabletop or basically a really wide kind of enhanced crosswalk from Franklin Park into the West Plaza space. Uh, that would join up with kind of the theme of the, of the plaza, which is this blue line here that's kind of our, like a river themes, kind of signifying the Wolf River. Kind of looping and through curving through the plaza. Uh, we also have some sun ray type features, uh, which sort of mimics some of the, the, the themes that you have on Franklin Park. Um, I'll come back to it in different view, but behind, you know, kind of here next to the bathroom, we have, uh, an area that we were kind of calling the honorarium. Where we've been in contact with some of the Native American tribes in the area there about how to incorporate some of their culture into that space specifically, but then also potentially kind of throughout the plaza as well. Um, and then as we move farther to east, uh, we have what we're calling the neck feature, uh, which is just kind of this straight fifteen foot wide space that the city was able to acquire to get pedestrians over to Main Street. Um, and again, I'll zoom in on another view, but, uh, as the, the blue path, you know, the river, if you will, kind of goes straight because it has to here because it's too narrow to wind. Um, we're incorporating some undulation in the roof of a shade structure there. Um, as we continue farther to the, to the east. I'm, I'm sorry. I think I got my directions backwards here, guys. Sorry. So farther to the west, um, that's Main Street there and we're showing a couple of bump outs there, we're calling them for, um, mostly pedestrian safety, but then also to kind of signify that you're entering a place of importance. Uh, what this will do is it'll create a little bit more space for the plaza. Uh, we'll be able to add some decorative elements. You may see here that we're, we're showing some, some light poles with the ability to, to hang banners across the street. Uh, I haven't quite decided on what we're going to fill those bump out spaces with, and that's another thing I'd like to talk with you all about tonight. Um, but then this crosswalk, we're kind of envisioning, it's not shown, but that this blue pavement may continue across, uh, Main Street there. Um, and then as we continue to the. To the, what is that? West. Um, we have the, the West Plaza space there, which has a water feature, uh, which is kind of a staple shape structure with a wall of water coming down, uh, and it's, it's not just an ambient wall of water that is a feature that's able to be programmed. So that there'll be lighting that can be programmed into, you know, pulses or, or kind of fading between colors. Uh, you can also program the wall to essentially do shapes or words, um, as intricate as you could sign your own name and hit send and it'll come down in the water, the curtain of water there. There'll also be some ground sprays around that. So it'll be kind of, uh, meant to be like an interactive feature, you know, you can run through the wall of water. There'd be some kind of surrounding sprays. Um, and then kind of surrounding that, we have a couple of seat walls. There's a, there's a few here. Um, if you can see my cursor. Um, they kind of go up to some grassy area and then one that is a prominent feature here that kind of separates that water feature from Main Street. Um, kind of to keep people from just going, going right out onto the public sidewalk there. Um, we also are showing a kind of half circle stage type feature here that's meant to be programmed for, you know, say, small concerts or, or dance performances. Um, we're also envisioning that this space here would be, uh, like usable for movies where you could project, project movies onto, uh, the, the wall of the Stubborn Brothers building. And the green space here would be sloped so that not only would you be able to kind of sit at some, some tables and chairs that aren't shown here in kind of the main plaza area, there will be some sort of hardscape, you know, colored concrete and, and normal concrete. Uh, but you'd be able to kind of lay a blanket on a sloped lawn there and, and watch the movie. Um, and then as you continue farther to the west, we have a pole garden feature here that would be able to, um, have some kind of like bistro style seating underneath it. Uh, there could be or would be envisioned here at least, uh, string lights between the poles, um, kind of interspersed with a bunch of trees. Um, so that's kind of a quick overview. And then I guess as you round out to the west there, this is the city's public parking lot. Um, which is important to note because this plaza space here will provide a lot more connectivity from this large parking lot to Main Street here. So that, um, instead of having to walk essentially around the block to get then into businesses, um, on Main Street, you can walk straight through the plaza space. Um, does anybody have any questions? I'll pause right there and let me know if I'm going into too much detail. If you're all like, yeah, yeah, we remember this or, um, any thoughts or questions so far?
I think we're good.
Okay. Um, so let me, uh, I'll zoom out a little bit here. Just get to the top here with some of these images. All right. So this one is, uh, you're kind of above Franklin Park right now. So you'd be facing to the east. And this would be the tabletop crossing. Um, we're envisioning taking the pillars that are, the pillars that say Franklin Park right now and moving one of them to kind of frame a wider tabletop crossing. Um, we have some bike parking kind of on the left side of the image there with a little sneak through into the plaza through like a vegetated area, you know, kind of envisioning some boulders in this area as well to add some aesthetic there. Um, this is also kind of that honorarium room that I was talking about where, you know, as you cross from Franklin Park, you'd be kind of looking right into the, the opening for that room. What we're showing here is a, a linear fire feature, uh, where you'd be able to sit on a seat wall on one side and then, you know, most likely some sort of chairs, maybe Adirondack or other style chairs on the other side of it. Uh, behind there, this kind of peeking out is, is a sturgeon that we're kind of in the process of getting some images and numbers on a, a large brass lifelike sturgeon bronze, sorry, the lifelike sturgeon that would, um, you know, kind of be supported and kind of hover above that space is what's been talked about so far. Um, that, you know, fish is very important for the menomni culture specifically, and so that's partially why that's kind of placed in that location. And then also we thought it might be nice that this firelight would kind of like shimmer off the bronze sturgeon at night. Um, it might add a nice touch there. Um, as I kind of look farther into the, the West Plaza space here, um, we have some kind of Corten Seal, um, walls, features here that I guess just kind of help delineate that space from the buildings to the north. Um, they'd likely have a vegetated feature behind it. We're showing kind of like an Arbovita wall type thing so that you can't entirely see through those. Um, we're also showing lighting scattered throughout. You might notice, uh, these are, you know, black poles with kind of two lights shown on them, but there's been really no significant discussion on what exact style of light pole would be used so far. Um, we are also showing a couple of shade structures with hanging benches. Uh, there's one here and then there's another one kind of peeking out to the left of that, that wall there. Uh, those have been really popular at Franklin Park and, and so we thought we'd bring that type of feature to the plaza as well. Um, and then as you can see, as you kind of keep going to the east, um, you begin to kind of get into the neck and you can kind of see a little bit of this undulation on the roof there. Um, is this large enough so that you guys can see it?
Yep.
Okay. Let me scroll down. I'll keep going. So here we have a view that you're kind of standing in like the middle of the West Plaza. So on the left side, you can see the hanging benches. Um, this, you know, brown wall is to contain kind of a, a planting vegetation area, but it will also be designed as a seat wall. We've been talking about maybe doing some, some down lighting underneath there to kind of illuminate it at night. These, uh, yellow features here are pebble seating, so they're just kind of like an informal, uh, seating space that would, you know, kind of mirror some of the other boulders scattered throughout the, the space. And then here's the neck, uh, kind of on the right hand side here, you can see it straightens out, got some undulation in the roof. Um, we've got that kind of bordered by some more of those Corten Steel panels, um, to, I guess, give some, some separation from to the right there is the, the driving aisle into the parking lot for the title company. Um, so we're trying to, kind of, kind of contain and for safety, uh, the pedestrians that are, are moving along that corridor. And then on the left of the blue walkway is some more, um, planting raised planters. That, uh, the thought here was that, you know, these raised planters would create some separation, but there's been some talk about, uh, the auto parts store redeveloping. So you'd have essentially a flat concrete space here that could, you know, very easily be blended with whatever that redevelopment is and, and kind of create like a seamless, where is the line between private and public space there, which has, uh, been, you know, really popular throughout the country when you can do that. Um, let's see here. Let's keep scrolling down. Here's a better view of that undulating, uh, neck structure. And you can kind of see what the, the view would be as you cross Main Street there. Um, you can see a little bit better, the, the water feature here with the staple and, and the water curtain. What else we got here? Now we're back kind of facing farther to, facing to the west, kind of above the, uh, above the eastern block. Um, so you can kind of see how those features interact. Another view of the, the water feature here with the seat wall separating it from Main Street. And then the kind of three step multi-color, uh, performance stage. Oops, excuse me on that one. Uh, here's a view. It's of the, uh, eastern block, kind of looking, uh, to your right off screen there. It would be the, sorry about this. See if I can zoom on. There you go. So the water feature shown here, um, we've got your, your tiered seat walls, um, some more of those same, same Corten Steel panels as a backdrop for the stage. Uh, this also gives you a good view of some of the light poles and, and these were intentionally positioned where you've got one on each side of the stage. And then one shown kind of behind the, the little kid dancing on the wall there. And then there'd be another one symmetrically crossed, um, kind of this sun ray area. And those are envisioned to have permanent speakers on them. So this space ideally would have a, a permanent speaker system where whatever programming you have, if they want to use sound, they can show up and plug some equipment into an already in place speaker system. Uh, there may also be some speakers scattered elsewhere, either on additional light poles or, you know, kind of in rocks or something like that. Haven't quite got that far, but I wanted to point that feature out. And then I guess the last one is, uh, kind of from the pole garden area, looking back towards the stage, you can start to see some of the, the string lights are shown here at the top of the poles, get some benches and some nice vegetation here. Um, and we're also talking about doing, you know, a number of trees here in, in tree wells. Um, those could either be a metal tree grate. Um, so far they've been more so talked about as being just kind of like a flush planting area where maybe around the tree there would be, um, you know, additional plants or maybe some sort of stone or something like that. Um, so that I guess would probably be a good summary. Um, unless anybody wants me to go back and zoom in on any other, any areas or talk about anything else in particular. I'm sorry. I couldn't quite hear you, but I thought I heard the word irrigation.
Uh, the check irrigation system. Help doing this.
Yeah, I'm, I'm really sorry. I could barely hear you. We, we are planning. Thank you for bringing it up. I, I know you're asking about irrigation. Um, we, we are planning on doing an irrigation system, um, specifically for the, the lawn area over here. Um, and potentially, um, you know, everything has a price to it, but potentially for all the planting areas in the plaza. Um, but there's, there's been, you know, specific talk about making sure this lawn area is sprinkled so that it's nice and lush. I mean, the, the, the point is for it to be inviting for people to want to like lay on with their family and watch a movie, that kind of thing. Um, and then, you know, that may extend into some of the other planting areas and/or even, um, if these poles had like hanging baskets in the summer on them, you could do a drip irrigation system into those, uh, baskets to make them really, really grow vibrant and pop for the plaza there. Um, hopefully that answers your question.
Yes, that's okay. I'm just checking. Thank you.
Kenny, I do have a question. Um, where the flower store is on the corner.
Yeah.
Then there's the, what's that like gray strip that between that last building and that just going to be a small area? Or it now looks kind of big.
You're talking about the lot that's between the plaza and the photography store?
Yes.
Right now, that's a lot that we, we do not own.
Oh, okay.
So that's, um, you know, ideally at some point we'd be able to acquire it, but as of right now, we do not own it. So the way we've kind of defined it using that L shaped wall and having that backdrop is eventually it can kind of be like its own room, but you see how the way they designed it for those rays kind of. You, you could continue that flat level space and we've talked about, or at least we've kind of talked internally, like, could you do like those industrial like concrete bean bags or, you know, something kind of fun over there or, you know, I'm just throwing all ideas, but you would be able to utilize it as a space later on, once you acquire it.
Okay. As of yet, we don't.
Correct. Hey, Brandon, can you, one thing, that other fire feature that you kind of could zoom in on right there?
Oh, yeah, thank you. Yeah, that's a very important. Thanks, Eddie. Um, so one somewhat recent ad was, um, a fire feature here. Um, kind of centered on the, the center ray from the, the sun type feature from the stage. Uh, we would build a little seat wall into this, this, uh, slope here so that you could sit, you know, at least halfway around it with kind of a permanent seating and then similar to what I described on the other side, you know, maybe you'd have some Adirondack chairs or something around the, the, the right side of it there. Um, and that would be natural gas. Um, you know, you can control those in quite a few different ways. Um, you could, you know, make it like a dial, like envision, you know, make it like a dial, like envision, you know, public pool hot tub or something where you turn it and it times out after 15 minutes or something. You know, you could just have it on for certain times of the night. So we haven't quite got that far on that one either, but that was a, thanks, Eddie. That's a good point out there.
Other questions on the design? Other feedback you want to give? Better than thumbs up?
A question on the design. I'm just curious, and and this might have been covered in previous meetings, but as far as is this going to be maintained by the city or Park and Rec Department? And whoever is going to be doing that? I mean, this is a big area. Are we anticipating in the summer, we're going to need additional bodies to help take care of the, you know, lawn mowing and cleanup and and that type of stuff?
We're we're, so it'll be a combination of public works and and park and rec, depending on, you know, what things are, you know, more in their alley or more in their lane. We're specifically trying to design it with as maintenance free as possible, or at least taking maintenance into consideration, because we do not intend to add additional staff to maintain this space. And that's been something we've been, and Brandon's been very conscious of it through the the design. You know, obviously, it's going to be a different usable space in winter than it is in summer, you know, snow removal and those kind of things. We'll have to figure out. But again, it's not going to be heavily utilized in the winter either. You'll want to maintain the walking paths and that kind of stuff. But as far as like mowing grass and taking care of the flowers and those kind of things and making sure it's clean and trash is picked up, it'll be a combination of our staff existing.
Eddie, just to play on your winter comment, one thing that's really important for me at least is that this water feature, all the lighting that's associated with, you know, the staple type feature and the ground sprays, is my understanding would be available year round. So, you know, even though the water might be turned off, there's still a lot of visual appeal there. You know, at Christmas time, you could turn on some red and green lights, you know, and have them kind of hit that structure or something like that. So I just thought that was noteworthy.
Well, speaking of of the wintertime and things like that, Brandon, you weren't able to accommodate Eddie's suggestion with maybe some flames that could pop out of the top of that fire or the water feature, since the water will be turned off in the winter anyways?
Yeah. Blake Blake from Architecture has been doing mostly investigation on that. And the summary comment that he gave was he he did explore it with the manufacturer, that water feature. And they were basically told him that it's not advisable.
They would, yeah, they said they would. They would not basically let us have it if that's what we were going to do with it.
I just wanted to make sure that we're still working on it, just in case.
We'll figure it out, Mayor. We'll get it. So a couple of things, if you're if you're good on the design, I think would be helpful to talk a little bit about where we are with the the conversations for that honorarium space. And then maybe quick on the bump out and then schedule, Brandon, just to recap.
Sure, absolutely. So the honorarium space is over here. Just what is that, east of Franklin Park? And recently, Starlin, geez, I'm blanking Eddie on her last name, got us in touch with Menominee and Stockbridge Muncie. So we had some nice video conferences with representatives from both tribes recently. With Joey, I'm going to butcher this, but Awana, Awana, Awana Hopai? He's the Director of Menominee Language and Culture. And then with Stockbridge Muncie, we were with Heather, I believe it's Bruegel, the Director of Cultural Affairs, and Jolene Bowman, Bowman, Director of Education and Career Services. Shannon Holsey was the President of the Council of Stockbridge Muncie. She was invited but was not able to make that meeting. And so we had some nice discussions about what is important for their culture, you know, in in this space or maybe scattered elsewhere throughout the the plaza feature or the plaza project in terms of any sort of, you know, flow like patterns, you know, or animals or trees or things like that that they would want to see incorporated here. And so we've got a really good list of of items going. They've sent us some some important patterns that they think could be used throughout. There was some discussion about how important the sturgeon is to the Menominee culture. There was some discussion on how each clan of the Menominee culture has a tree that's associated with it. So if, you know, instead of just randomly picking trees, if we chose trees that are for each clan, that that might be a nice idea. Originally, the the tile pattern shown here is a two foot by two foot tile that was envisioned to have some sort of pattern on it, because the company that makes these can take a, you know, CAD line work essentially and create like a lay, a large layout of of a pattern. That may still come to fruition, you know, some of the patterns that the Menominee have provided and stuff may be appropriate for putting on those tiles, but we haven't quite decided what might happen there. There's also been some discussion of of using wild rice. Let's see, I'm trying to find a good a good image here to show you. So instead of, you know, this this pattern here is it's a stock pattern from the company that makes these, you know, and you can see it's kind of plant like. But there's been some discussion about maybe doing these as a custom wild rice pattern because of how important wild rice is to the Menominee culture, which would, you know, essentially leave the concept unchanged. It just has a much more important, you know, plant in there than than just that kind of random pattern. The many trail symbol for the Stockbridge Muncie tribe was very important. And so there was some talk about licensing that to the city to incorporate in the space someplace. So we have, we have a lot of good ideas flowing. And and I thought it was worth mentioning as well that that both tribes are talking about getting involved with the, is it the Native American Tourism Board or Eddie, maybe help me out with that one?
Yeah, NATO.
NATO, yeah. About possibly providing some some funding for the plaza to kind of help make all these things a a reality, because, you know, as you can imagine, everything I just described has a cost associated with it. Instead of, you know, say, doing a stock panel, you you want to do a custom panel. You know, there's usually an upcharge for that, or instead of a a flat concrete wall on, you know, maybe colored or something on one of these seat walls. If you want to imprint a pattern on it, you know, that's probably going to cost more money too. So there was some discussion on them trying to help with some of that, which was great. I guess that'd probably be a good summary for me. Eddie, if you had anything to add, that'd be great too, or Matt as well. I know you were there.
I I just think the the overall conversation was really good. A lot of excitement about incorporating, you know, the cultural, like the significant cultural things that they want to see. I think that I'm glad we had those conversations, because I think it allowed us to to hone in on the really important stuff versus some things that maybe we didn't know. Learned a lot, I think.
Yeah, certainly. So those are definitely ongoing conversations. You know, everybody had kind of things that they left the meeting that we each were going to look into and come back with. Should we move on to the demo results?
Sure.
Anybody have any other questions or comments along those lines?
Nope, we're good to go on.
All right. You can hopefully see the bid tabulation for the demo project now. So we we received six bids, which was great. That's pretty good for any project to get six bids. They were ranged pretty broadly. Let me zoom out for a while. I'll just pan over here. So what you're seeing the top line is the base bid. Then we had two bid alternates. What the alternates were was to get a specific price, bid alternate one, which would be this row here, was to get a price to save the neighbor in 1903 stones off the facade of the the main building, just to kind of give us a thought on, you know, what exactly are we talking about here? Is it worth it or is it not worth it? And then bid alternate two was in the base bid, which I saw the motion tonight included. The base bed includes preserving 4,100 square feet of brick from the existing building. It in the basement was just to basically stockpile that on site, and then, you know, later it would be kind of picked through and cleaned out, cleaned up. There is a specific use in mind for that. But what alternate bid two was if, instead of making the contractor save that brick, if we just said, you guys do it with the brick, whatever you want, what would you save or add to your bid? I mean, people put different pricing on that, because then they have to truck it away sometimes. And so as you can see, some people said, you know, two of the six said, you know, that doesn't change my price at all. Couple said, we'll give you a little back, 4,000, 3,000. One said it would cost an additional 1,200. And then for some reason, the MRD group there said it would save us $142,000. Interesting there, but I guess the the range on the base bid, which is important, was 139,000 to 468,000. The low bid coming from Beaton Company Incorporated. And I guess, you know, we were happy-ish, happy with that number. You know, what was included in the grant application was 120,000. We had been using 100,000 as a placeholder in some of our kind of budget debits and credits for what we had left for construction. So we were a little bit over both of both of those numbers, but as you can see, 139,000 is pretty low compared to some of the other bids. So we were, I was, and I hope hopefully the city is as well, you all are as well, that I'm pretty happy with that number. It definitely didn't blow anything out of the water in terms of being able to afford the rest of the plaza, in my opinion.
I can just kind of comment on that, too. I think we all, we all had an idea of what that was going to be, but it was eye opening for me when we did the walkthroughs with the all the contractor groups. I think we probably had 15 to 20 show up that were interested in the project. And by the time I let them in and started walking around, 10 of them didn't go in and five walked away. Because the challenge of this is it's an unstable building. Like typically, what they would prefer to do is get in there at the skid steer and start peeling things out and 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 go at it from the inside. In this building, they won't be able to run any equipment on the inside. So they'll have to be very strategic about how they peel things out. So it's not a giant job, but it obviously attracted some big time companies. Fight took down the Bradley Center, so they have experience in large commercial demo, which, yeah, it's a little bit more than we were hoping for, but it makes me feel good knowing it's a company that has all those resources to do this and that it's not just, you know, some startup who is going to give it their best. I don't know if there's any other, Brandon.
No, that was great, Dan. Thank you. It was definitely eye opening touring the building with the the experts, if you will, and kind of some of their thoughts on how challenging that these buildings will be.
So you'll be approving that actually as we move on in the agenda tonight. So if we want to have more comments on that, we can. Otherwise, we can kind of move on to bump out quick or schedule, Brandon. What are your thoughts? Do you want to keep moving along?
Yeah, well, why don't we, let's go back to the bump outs real quick. I just, we're looking for some input, I guess, on. I mentioned in my earlier description that these bump outs, they're shown right now with, you know, a pattern that may imply like a, like a brick paver or something like that. We certainly could do that, you know, for everywhere in that space. We're also showing a few trees. So, you know, you could do some brick pavers with tree wells. You could do colored concrete. You could do stamped colored concrete. You could do part of these bump outs in, you know, a colored concrete or or a brick, and then have some more significant vegetation spaces. There is, you know, an important couple of things that aren't quite shown here is where my mouse is. Hopefully, you can see that. There's a driveway for the title company. There's also a driveway for the auto parts store. And then, you know, the this will have to be some sort of concrete, you know, probably the blue across the bump outs to make, you know, continue that river feature across Main Street. So on the, would that be the west side here, the right side on the image? We only have a few spaces that, you know, don't like are, they can be something other than, I guess, concrete. You know, you've got two driveways and a pedestrian crossing. So kind of the north and south ends of the bump out would be available for, you know, other type of finishes. But on the other side, we're fairly open. I mean, really, the only thing we have to worry about there is the crossing, but the rest of it can be kind of whatever we choose. There was, has been some discussion that, you know, that you do have stubborn brothers right here that, you know, it may be nice to have that as some sort of hardscape so they could use it for proceeding out along Main Street there. But certainly doesn't have to be that way. So I just, I guess I'll stop talking there and see if people had any thoughts there.
That that's the Wolf River. I mean, you can kind of assume that that's what it is. But I think it'd be kind of cool in that bump out area to have some sort of an image of a wolf, you know, to signify that, you know, that's the Wolf River, and, you know, give it more of a an eye appeal, just, you know, some sort of an image of a wolf right on each side of it.
All right, right now and down.
I think the only thing that I had commented on when I was on the committee was I I liked the idea of more of a stamped or a flat surface, whatever. I mean, I want it to be decorative, but I want it to be flat so that people that are walking with strollers or walkers or people that have disabilities are not having a struggle trying to get across the sidewalk. Many years ago, when we revitalized Shano, you still see remnants of it around town. The bricchish looking on the on the four ways, you know, like on division, say, Main and Green Bay Street, that people with disabilities cannot get across that brick, that they step, they trip and stumble, and people that are blind cannot cannot navigate through it. And so that was something that we fell short on many, many years ago. And so for me, I like it being decorative, but now there's so many modern ways to stamp it or do other things than having it be raised as in a, meaning a different texture.
Sure, absolutely.
I have to agree with Rhonda after breaking my ankle last year. Going around with scooter. Tougher to go over like cobblestone bricks. The stamping idea, I like to raise it and put whatever pattern, unless you don't have to worry about bricks raising or falling during the winter. More solid, one piece might be maintained.
So it sounds like the hardscape is definitely the preferred. I mean, we weren't thinking grass terraces, because that would be obviously impossible to maintain. But, you know, mixing in some some tree walls and some flower beds at all. So I mean, not that it would be fair, and I guess what I'm hearing is kind of what where we were on the planning group is some form of of easy to maintain hardscape that obviously isn't going to create challenges for people where it might look cool, but all of a sudden now it's, you know, it's difficult for people to get around on.
Would you use something like etched concrete?
Absolutely.
That would be a good one.
One other thing that I didn't hit on earlier that you can kind of see here is there's an existing concrete base in a in a large pole kind of by over by the title company that we're talking about maybe reusing for some sort of blade style sign that could be, you know, a name for this plaza. Be pretty prominently displayed as you drive along Main Street and right at that main crossing. That certainly doesn't have to come to fruition, but it's an it's a opportunity at least. Also, there's been a lot of talking about how how you come up with the name for the space. So that this thought I'd point that out since I didn't touch on it earlier.
Okay. Well, we'll, I think we'll be able to, I mean, just, I think that's where we were going. We just wanted to make sure we weren't totally off base, that like it wanted to be all green space or that kind of thing. So I think we're, we can work with with what we got.
Okay. Um, let's see here. So for schedule, just give me a second here. I thought I had it up, but here we go. Can you guys see that?
Yep.
All right. So we thought that, you know, this is your, your regularly scheduled council, council meeting, so you don't have too many of those coming up before we had envisioned bidding this. So what I've laid out here is just a general schedule. So tonight, Wednesday, June ninth, council status update and review, you know, that's, that's now. We envisioned bringing this back to you next month. We envisioned having it at about sixty percent drawings within a company's cost estimate for the project. That would be in July. And then again, bringing it back to you in August at your regularly scheduled meeting on the eleventh, with ninety percent drawings and associated cost estimate, that's what OPCC stands for, is cost estimate. And alternates, and by alternates, I mean, we've kind of always been talking about bidding this project with quite a few alternate bids to kind of give us some insurance that we can award a base bid that is the plaza, we're building the plaza that we want and will function, but maybe some of the, the pieces that aren't core to the plaza, you know, if we can't, if we don't have the budget for everything can be broken off. You know, some of the more expensive, smaller features or some of the, the pieces such as like the parking long Franklin Park, you know, the sturgeon, for example, or some of the, the shade structures, like the swinging benches or something like that. You know, every, we want everything, but we may not be able to afford it. So that would be the opportunity to kind of talk about, you know, what do we want as bid alternates or not. And then we would also, we're talking about advertising for the plaza a couple of weeks at, or sorry, not even a couple of weeks, like nine days after that, that regularly scheduled meeting with your August twentieth Shawno leader. And then opening bids almost four weeks later on September sixteenth. And then we would potentially have a special common council meeting to award the bid on September twentieth. And this is all with the intent of allowing a contractor to start on some aspects of the plaza this fall still. This is fairly quick, so the main goal with this schedule is to allow some sort of construction to begin this fall. If that was not, you know, very, well, I should, I should add, allow construction to start this fall with the hope that the plaza could open like midsummer next year. If we push to start a construction back till next spring, you most likely wouldn't have this open till late summer or the fall. So that's kind of where this schedule came from. Does anybody have any questions or comments on that?
So this timeline, I think what I've heard from people, the feedback I've gotten is that we definitely want them to start working this fall, is too much, as much as they can. Because I think we're really trying to shoot for that midsummer. So Brandon's, we kind of put this together this afternoon, calling for that special meeting. It's two, it's, so it'd be two meetings in September would, would actually save us about four weeks worth of time, because otherwise we wouldn't be able to award until our October meeting, which is like mid-October. So if we did that, then we would pretty much ax this season and we'd just be starting next year, and we'd probably be talking more about like a September opening next year. And I think everyone, now, we, we can't control what might happen with the construction schedule and stuff down the road, that could happen anyway, but this allows us to kind of keep our goal of a midsummer opening. So if we're on board with that, that's a schedule that we'd want to keep.
I'd also add that regardless of whether you want this to open midsummer or fall next year, I'd still advise that we open bids this fall at some point because a lot of the features here may have long lead times on them. The shade structures, the light poles these days are, have long lead times on them. It seems like a lot of things in the world have long lead times on them. So that would allow contractors to start ordering this, these materials and hopefully have them onsite in the spring ready to install, you know, whenever they, they need to be installed.
So I guess the big, another big question, are you guys comfortable with seeing this in July at sixty and then August at ninety and then we're going out? You guys feel like you've got, you're comfortable with where the project is, you're comfortable that at that August meeting, we'll have a pretty good idea of where we're going to come in at on budget-wise and that we'll have to make some, maybe some tough calls that day? Well, not, we'll have to figure out which alternate we want to actually set up if we think some things may come in high. But I just want to make sure, I mean, it's a big project, we've been talking about it a long time, but I want to make sure that you guys have a comfort level that you are getting all the information that you need as we move forward with those two, two meetings left.
Eddie, I think it's a good time anyway because we're going to be deep into budget for next year anyway, in September, so it might be a compliment hand-in-hand to see where we are with everything.
Yeah.
I think it'd just be much easier to do it that way.
Be nice to know what our costs are going to be going into next year, for sure.
Going into next year.
Okay. Well, then we'll, we'll push on with this schedule, which I think, like I said, Brandon and I kind of revised a little. Any other questions for Brandon? Time? I think you answered all their questions, Brandon.
All right, that's, that's great. And thanks for the opportunity to be here, and this is a super exciting project, so really looking forward to continuing with design and hopefully being able to be on it next year.
All right. Thank you.
So moving, moving on, we're, we're going to be looking for an approval for resolution number seventy-three twenty-one, approve the bid award for the demolition of two fourteen, two sixteen North Main Street Shawno.
So this is what we just discussed, and, you know, it's the low bid, they're very qualified, a little bit more than we were hoping to spend, but not out of the ballpark from where we thought we were going to be, so.
Second. Okay, so we have a motion in a second, and this will be a roll call vote if there's any discussion beforehand.
I do have one thing, because this came in after finance, I do need a sponsor.
I'll sponsor it.
Um, just that they've done big, massive projects before, like the Bradley Center, they did a lot of the third ward building demolition. They're, I think they were probably one of the biggest companies that got everybody, and their, their book of business is enormous. We, we don't yet know schedule on when the demo is going to happen. We plan to actually, I think Brandon has a meeting set up with them on Monday to talk about schedule. So they have a must-be-done-by date, but people are asking today, you know, with, you know, when? We don't know that yet, but sometime this summer.
I think they're a union company, too. Think they can pick up most labor quickly.
Yeah, I Googled them once I saw they were a little bid, and I was like, okay, yeah, they're pretty qualified.
You know, not, not an assumption, but an opinion would be that they do such large jobs that this is such a small job, there's, it's a fill-in, but doesn't, because they already have all the equipment, they already have everything necessary to do it, but that's just an opinion. Okay, so is there any further discussion? Be a roll call vote.
Stanky?
Aye.
Haves?
Aye.
Hoffman?
Aye.
Barco?
Aye.
Strabo?
Aye.
Kusel?
Aye.
Resolution number sixty-seven twenty-one, approve resolution declaring official intent to reimburse expenditures from proceeds of borrowing as related to the twenty-twenty-two street and utility reconstruction project funding through the safe drinking water loan program. Okay, this says, put together through D W staff, it, the other intent apply months ago, and now this is our actual applying for this funding. Program offers potential grant forgiveness, loan forgiveness, which is basically a, we're looking at possibly getting thirty-five percent. Not sure that we're going to get it, you know, can always deny it. Grant money, but yes, it's something that we're fairly well on because of our lead exceed. And this, our projects.
So it's the projects that we were already planning on doing, but we built our CIP around addressing these lead-related issues, so we feel like we're going to score really well, so it was worth applying. We've applied in the past, but haven't necessarily scored as well because we, we knew we weren't going to have the points. With this project, the way we built the CIP year in twenty-twenty-two, feel pretty good that we're going to get it, and it could be up to forty-five percent paid for.
I'll make a motion for resolution sixty-seven twenty-one.
Okay.
Okay, so we have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, this is also a roll call vote.
Strabo?
Aye.
Hoffman?
Aye.
Haves?
Aye.
Stanky?
Aye.
Barco?
Aye.
Kusel?
Carry. We'll move on to resolution number sixty-eight twenty-one, approve the twenty-twenty-one cross-connection program. That's twenty-seven thousand, two sixty-four for a two-year contract. All right, yep, this is again my department, cross-connection program, they're speaking, you know, we do all our residential cross-connection in the D W staff doing that three hundred a year. This is for the commercial industrial side of it. So a little bit tougher, but they're looking for infiltration or potential packs, like a lot of residential homes that, and expecting, make sure like, just, any and some water that could potentially hydrate, grow for something. This is a company that kind of looked around and there's nobody else on it.
Question for resolution sixty-eight twenty-one?
Second. In a second, any further discussion?
Strabo?
Aye.
Haves?
Aye.
Hoffman?
Aye.
Stanky?
Aye.
Barco?
Aye.
Kusel?
Aye.
Carry. Okay, resolution number nine twenty-one, approved submission of the twenty-twenty C-MAR report, that was submitted in twenty-twenty-one, and I believe that that report goes to the D N R, and that was A-plus grading, correct, again, D W. Just, the D N R's way of checking to make sure your thing's right, just some maintenance of it, your, look through here, you can kind of see we actually do maintaining, first, televising, we televise about thirty percent of our sewer here, and cleaning, we're trying to get somewhere around fifty percent, I think we were, some percent this past year, so cleaning, televising, those are two really key tools. So I'd look for a motion to approve. Motion in a second, do we have discussion? None, all in favor?
Aye.
Close? Carry. Let's move on to resolution number seventy twenty-one, twenty twenty-one track and rail switch maintenance agreement. And again, I believe this is Scott, and it's sixteen thousand, three hundred and fifty dollars, bid budget sixteen thousand, five hundred dollars. Does Eddie put this together, it seems like? Eddie put this together a few years back, have issues, D N M, Canadian National coming in, shutting down for, like, some of our businesses. They shut down, basically film a bag, they have to start trucking it. Half the time, they're too product that they ship over fail. Again, this is something that we do to maintain it since implemented this program, early maintenance. Had a few instances, they shut down, not too many, be probably a couple times a year. Implementing this program. Keep, spur track. Hey, thank you, Scott. So I look for a motion for seventy twenty-one, please?
I'll make a motion to accept resolution seventy twenty-one.
Second. Do we have a motion in a second? Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, this will be a roll call vote.
Barco?
Aye.
Haves?
Aye.
Kusel?
Aye.
Strabo?
Aye.
Stanky?
Hoffman?
Aye.
Motion, pass. Seventy-one, seventy-one twenty-one, approved special revenue fund creation for American Rescue Plan funds.
Basically, we know we're going to be receiving our ARPA funds and have the best thing to do with that so it doesn't touch our general fund and show like we got extra revenue that we would be able to replace with taxable revenue. Is to set it into a special fund, so we're just creating a special revenue fund to receive these funds so we can put them in there, and then when we decide what we want to do with it, with the money, that's not, I mean, doesn't, don't mingle with any of our other books that way then.
Okay, we have a motion in a second, is there any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Carry. Resolution number seventy-two twenty-one, approve resolution to proceed with the vacation of the alleyway located between the two-hundred block North Main Street and Washington.
So if you look at the picture, that might be the easiest way to start. So this is part of the land shifting that we're doing as part of the plaza space. So the area to be vacated, that's that T space, that's, we've had these agreements with automotive supply and the other, and the property owners there, that we're going to vacate this, obviously, because part of it needs to be for the plaza space to continue all the way through. So what we're asking you to do tonight is make a recommendation, a resolution recommending the vacation of this space, they'll then go before plan commission, and then back to you for a public hearing at a future meeting, and at that point, the land will then be vacated. We will redraw all the property lines through a C S M based on the agreement we have with the, with the automotive supply, and so they'll get some of the space, we'll get some of the space. And when it's all said and done with this extremely confusing land transaction process that's lasted over about a year, we'll have the space defined in the pictures that Brandon showed you. showed you for the plaza space. So really, it's, uh, it's, it's nothing new, it's something we've been anticipating and all the properties owners who are affected are aware of it.
So I'll be looking, motion for seventy-two twenty-one, motion.
Ooh. Second.
Second, have any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carry. All right, so now we're going to move on to ordinance nineteen ninety-two, repeal and recreate chapter two, the common council section two dot oh zero three order of business.
So this ordinance was brought up, um, from our conversation that we had at last month's meeting where we wanted to, um, move consent agenda up a little bit to allow for you to take items out of there if you wanted to have those on the table for discussion and not have everything, um, within the consent agenda. So that is what this is doing as well as just fixing a couple of their, um, things that needed to be corrected due to changes that we've had over the past few years.
Can I get a motion for ordinance nineteen ninety-two? Motion in a second, is there any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carry. Ordinance nineteen ninety-three, residential accessory structure square footage, looking for amend, chapter ten zoning code section ten dash sixty-five accessory land uses and structures, pair seven residential accessory structures, B regulations, uh, number one not.
Something that the plan commission took up, um, a couple instances where we had the residential accessory structure is, it's not allowed to be larger than your, your, your house, obviously garage bigger than the house according to our code. So, um, but one of the things that came up a couple of times was people that had two-story houses, it specifically said the ground floor. So if you had a fifteen hundred square foot house, but your ground floor was only seven hundred and fifty square foot, then you would be limited to having a seven hundred and fifty square foot garage, even though your house was much bigger than that. So what this does by changing it to total square footage, so it would be your first floor or your second floor, um, it would allow for those people who have a house that size to maximize up to the twelve hundred square foot of garage that, that everyone else is allowed who has like a ranch that is, so our max is twelve hundred square feet for garage space. So anything above and beyond, if your house is above and beyond twelve hundred square feet, you can have twelve hundred square feet of garage. This just allows everyone with two-story to have the same option as everybody else.
I'll look for motion on ordinance number nineteen ninety-three.
Second.
We have a motion in a second, is there any further discussion? Seeing none, we, uh, look for, uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, ordinance number nineteen ninety-four, amend chapter ten zoning code section ten dash one oh one exterior site and building design standards, uh, pair seven requirements for exist exterior materials, pair B, uh, prohibited materials, uh, five metal siding, and then C exterior.
There's another, faster. Another item from, uh, plan commission, um, that, as you've probably seen a lot of, more of the, the metal sheds that are, are being built and utilized. Um, our code restricted, restricts metal use to, um, unexposed fasteners and most of these sheds have exposed fasteners. The difference is the technology has changed a lot, so the reason why we haven't allowed metal sheds to have exposed fasteners in the past is because usually they rust out, they become unsightly. Now they're powder coated, the bolts match the steel. So the plan commission thought, well, we're not ready to say we want to allow that for, you know, all practical uses, but for these like pre-built, prefabbed metal sheds that you're able to purchase, you know, from some of these Amish builders or some of the people in the area, up to two hundred and forty square feet seemed like a reasonable size to utilize, um, exposed fasteners. Above and beyond that would require, um, hidden fasteners, so like any kind of commercial buildings, and that's pretty much the norm.
Okay. So I'll look for a motion on ordinance nineteen.
Second.
Discussion? None, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carry. Now we'll move on to the consent agenda. Now, Leslie, at this point, can anybody pull anything out of here yet, or we can't? We just have one flat out consent agenda? Have further discussion yet? I would expect. They would have pulled it out already, fine. First of all. Just in case somebody wanted to. Okay, so on the consent agenda, we've got the approval of common council minutes, got approval of applications for temporary class B beer license, uh, picnic licenses, uh, the bills and the claims, approval of road closure requests. Uh, seventy. That, that's separate, that, that's not part of the consent.
I'll make a mo- I'm, I'm, I'm making a motion for the consent agenda.
Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. So we'll go on to seventeen, now we'll talk about the approval of ski sharks, division two national competition event plan.
Yeah, I can speak to this and, and, uh, I actually have other person Kuchel in the room as well, who is, one of his other hats he wears is helping orchestrate events like this. Um, so I guess first and foremost, this is pretty cool to see, right? I mean, one of the reasons you build public spaces is to be able to host large events. Um, I don't want to speak for the ski sharks, but I doubt they probably would have had a successful bid at such a large scale event without the changes that were made to the site. Um, and I think though that partnership, not only between ski sharks and the city, but also everyone else was involved that brought this, now allows us to entertain events like this. That's, that's pretty unique, I think that's pretty awesome. The reason it's all kind of lumped together, there is there, excuse me, there is four or five things that would have required your individual approval, so working with Leslie, what we tried to do was just to kind of put everything in one package. Maybe what I'll do is I'll go through them all and then if you have questions, comments, concerns, we can go back and speak. Yeah, all right. So what is it? It's a division two national ski event, so it is what it says, it's, it's teams from across potentially the nation. Um, there's a maximum of fourteen ski, fourteen ski teams that have pre-qualified somewhere else that are stepkids or grandkids that are in sports, right? Or some of the top ski teams for this division that would come to the area. It's estimated that we could see somewhere between twenty-five hundred and three thousand people come to Shawnee for the weekend. Um, people are staying in town or camping in town, they're eating, buying gas, and so from that perspective, that's a pretty great thing. And it's the first time that this event has been held here, so although it's potentially similar to other ones, still it gets unique in its own. Anytime we go through events and experience, put together our best laid plans and then greatest things we can do, and it's just get together and meet and talk about what went well. You hope that this ends not. Your. Right, that you be a successful calling for the facility for the ski sharks. So specifically, what are they looking for? Um, first item is the class B picnic license, all very familiar with. That, the waterway closure, uh, this is probably most similar to waterway closures that world record attempt. Time are adjusting or impacting rules and regulations on the waterway. It is in fact, and first by Wisconsin D N R, and Shawnee County, while are the policy makers of doing that, waterway can. So what is that? Okay, so one of those attachments you'll see, um, where they would have a no wake enclosure area from approximately the train trussel down to the dam, um, and over to the mouth of the channel. Uh, that is the exact same waterway closure that has occurred during the world record attempts. The difference in this scenario is that this is for multiple days and this is for almost a year day. Opposed to in the past, it was for a few hours or even more. So you do potentially have some impact to your recreational weekend users there. Uh, the ski sharks have accounted for some of that. Um, you'll see on there, they do have an area where, um, waterway is not closed, non-tournament boats, um, but is a no wake area that allows users to go from the channel up the river. Um, and also, they also have that, that goes from both of the multiple channels, which would be along the west side of the waterway to allow homeowners that may be down in that area. There's some few modifications, right? But the waterway can be extremely busy, but it allow people to still move that area. They, just going before you first, but they will, they have approved championships. Like in the past that ever needed. So that's the waterways, um, how do you educate people on that? You put up signage, you put up buoys, you put up boats. Um, I think Brad even spoke to having kind of a roll boat, if you will, that would, uh, try to educate people on, uh, if that's a waterway. The next is the beach closure, uh, you know, somewhat obvious, but having numerous boats with lots of skiers, um, having the public beach open during that event, you know, it's just a safety consideration, we're just trying to make it as possible. You are temporarily closed, not necessarily the park because the event itself is open to the public, but you are closing the. Recreation. You have a street closure, which kind of just a parking lot really, but it's technically still a street, it's a roadside drive, a fifth street to end road, go anywhere to look at it, parking lot, all the park sign instead of, um, both using tournament event parking lot. Then the last piece is really face. Face that's adjacent to the park, other attachment labeled site layout. Area could be laid out, you think about amount of vehicles and equipment that will be on site, that'll be a fair amount. Each ski team will be bringing boats, boats, obviously trucks, boats on there. So what, way it's laid out is they would allow them to stage on the south end of that grass area on the waterway itself, from what I understand, if you have their team that is in performance, have the batter up, if you will, team that's next online is, yeah, team that's done, they move off the waterway. Waterway, that leaves twelve team boats. Or at the end of the site, the spectator parking. Vehicles there, parks, parking lots, but that, so you, you, current situation. Point, I added, is there anything, I'll make sure it gets talked about, and or council members, mayor, are there any questions to talk about?
Brad is looking at.
Yeah, thank you, Brad. That's what I forgot. Um, there will be, uh, safety plan that will be by the ski sharks, very similar to super Thursday's at Franklin, very similar with Undrop, just, they just did kind of a, what happened to me, add what, who makes the call, what happened to that plan.
Matt covered most of the main points that we had discussed. Uh, I will just say that other areas that I've gone to for national tournaments do similar thing, not cutting out all through traffic. Um, as ski sharks, we regularly perform if anyone's watching from their boats, our drivers are, it's basically a safety concern for, like, are coming in four or five boats, similar to the size of ours, that just want to just bridge. Also, um, be able to get through, we'll still keep on the traffic. Competit.
I second it. Okay, so we have a motion in a second. Uh, is there any further discussion other than, uh, to what has been talked about here tonight? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Happy to say, um, motion carries.
Yeah.
Okay, so we'll move on to number eighteen, committee member comments, or new business be considered at a future meeting.
Can we get our mayor and chair?
It could be part of my body, but hurting.
Eddie, with all the new stuff that's going on, um, was it about five years ago we started the R D A?
Yeah.
It would be nice to have an update of what's happened to the prob- these properties that were blighted, what's changing, how are we working with it? Because people want to know what's going on and see, you know, what improvements have been made and kind of keep encouraging people that we keep our properties up in the city and nice things are happening.
Yeah, I mean, I can say that the R D A's done a, um, a great job getting involved. Oh, they're working on a lot of projects, obviously the land acquisition, light elimination being their charge. Um, they made a lot of headway, um, other things that I, I would be happy to, to bring forward, I could prepare, you know, something of status report kind of thing of, you know, where some things are related to the original questions.
That, that'd be great.
Yeah, I can do that.
Be nice to see like a five-year plan that's.
Sure.
Hopefully we're, thank you.
Yep. Anything else? You know? Time, we're going to move into closed session, so I'll be looking for a motion to go into closed session under Wisconsin state statute nineteen dot eighty-five one E, liberating or negotiating the purchasing of public property, investing public funds, or conducting other specified public business, ever competitive, arning reasons require a closed session. Have a, a motion in a second? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, so at this time, ask everybody to, uh, leave, that, uh, part of the closed session will be enclosed.
Keep, uh, Keith and Leslie in.
Okay.
Just for the record, we'll keep Keith and Leslie in.
Keith and Leslie will be staying in. Keith and Leslie will be staying in.